Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of San Bruno, October 23, 2012. I would like to, along with roll call, Carol, let you know that Irene O'Connell is away from the room this evening, but she's joining us by Skype, so she will be an active member of this council. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Buwain.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
All right, and, let's see. Chief Telford, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any specific announcements this evening. We do have one presentation. That is to receive a presentation from Sam Trans on proposed changes to the bus route service plan. Is Sam Trans joining us?
Sam Trans is not here.
Maybe the bus is late.
I guess they're not here.
They missed the bus.
Maybe we could defer that item.
Yeah, we can defer that item. Okay, we'll go on to review the agenda with the councils concurrent. I would like to bring item 10E up to right after consent agenda. There's no objections. Any other changes in the agenda? All right. Approval of the minutes to a regular city council meeting of October 9, 2012. Ares, changes of missions? Seeing none, they will stand approved as...
I have one minor correction then.
Oh, city clerk.
...and the case of passports being applied to him, not fixed upon.
Okay. They'll be approved with the change you just told us about. The consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Could you tell us your name, please?
Sure. Nweed, and I'd like to get item number F pulled out for further discussion.
Okay. Any others?
To the chair.
Michael?
I'd like to pull item G.
G?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any others? Okay.
Move to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F is adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Ford XLF 450 truck in the amount of $66,803. A 2012 hand model HD-12VV roller drum compactor in the amount of $42,961.18. And three Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptors in the amount of $75,760.
The part of item F that I'd like to at least ask, ask that there be a motion and a second to table item F for further discussion and analysis regarding the portion which says three Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptors in the amount of $75,760. The reason being is, let me first state who I am. My name is Nweed Amin, and I'm a former Millbury Police volunteer, now currently a sheriff's volunteer with the County Cemetery. Now, I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as a public citizen. But in my experiencing of driving both police and sheriff vehicles, that the Crown Victoria is, you know, ridden with safety issues and upgradeability issues, especially with respect to things like radios, equipment, what, you know, what you can do with a vehicle. And so if I may, I want to approach the council and provide a brief sheet of paper that documents what I'm about to say.
Why don't you give those to the clerk?
Okay.
She'll take care of it.
And at the same time, I would like to distribute a sheet to the public so that they have at least an idea, if I may.
Yeah, you can leave it there with the rest of the sheets that are, that the public can pick up.
Now, since you have the sheets in front of you, so let me just briefly, you know, brief period of time. I request the city council request information about why the police department wishes to purchase discontinued models, which have safety, like I said, upgradeability issues. Now, on the bottom, I provided two pictures. One is a Ford, one is a Dodge Charger, and the other are the new Ford Police Interceptors. And these are inherently safer, easier to maintain, more cost-effective, and can safely accommodate current and future internal equipment upgrades such as radios, computers, sirens, safety gear, et cetera. And I'd like to bring it to the city's council's attention if has there been any comparison pricing done, whether it's leasing versus purchasing, where there has been a, where the city council has been provided information about comparison of Dodge versus Ford Interceptor versus Crown Victoria Police Interceptor. As some of you may not know, the Crown Victoria Police Interceptor has been discontinued as of last year. And then the third item is insurance rates are rising. How much additional insurance will the city pay, both in terms of protecting the officers and insurance for the vehicles? And then the last point being, and I'll keep it short, is does the new, does the purchase of the Crown Victoria Police Interceptors, does that include all the necessary police packages? Are those an additional cost? And when I mean necessary police packages, I'm talking about things such as radios. What is a police vehicle without a radio? What is a police vehicle without a computer? And those things can be very expensive, so, you know. So radios, computers, sirens, what about maintenance cost? What about safety gear? What about special training for officers? Do officers need training with respect to the new equipment purchases? Or are they using old equipment and just putting it? Are there refurbished models such as radios, computer equipment? Is there going to be additional training for the cars compared to whatever the police department may currently have? And what is the life cycle of these vehicles? Warranty options? Is there a five-year warranty plan? Or are these just bare bones models? I mean, especially for police vehicle, I would at least like the city council to know, hey, we have a five-year warranty plan, we have a three-year warranty plan, it covers powertrain, this, that. And, you know, the last item is, I just, for the purpose of brief comparison, I highlighted the two pictures below in your sheet of paper. And those were the, on the left-hand side, there's a, briefly, it's a Ford Police Interceptor, and on the right side of the picture is a 2013 Dodge Charger Pursuits. And those are two primary competition that I like to do. No. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief, some comments?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So let me try and address some of the questions. The Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptor is, I'm not aware of any safety issues with the vehicle. It's a tried and true model. It has been the standard of police use for several years. It was discontinued last year, and as you authorized previous years, we tried to stock up on them. The courtyard was able to find some vehicles because the police, nothing really has yet to replace the Ford Crown Victoria. There's not really a frontrunner out there. There are certainly models to choose from, but each model has issues such as size, such as visibility from the driver's side, and such as interior size for some of our taller officers. We felt that the Crown Victoria is a tried and true model. It's cost-effective. In terms of equipment, we can take the existing equipment from our Crown Victorias in use that we're going to replace, and we can just switch those right into the new vehicles. These are new police vehicles. They do come with a warranty. They have not been put into service yet, and we found them from a fleet dealer as part of a Los Angeles bid in Southern California.
Any questions for the chief? Okay.
Chief, can you just answer the question, the, as far as what additional costs other than, I'm assuming that a lot of the existing equipment gets transferred to the new vehicle, but what additional cost does it take for, for the vehicle to be up and running?
It is just labor to transfer the existing equipment into the new vehicle. And so in terms of cost, I don't have a figure for you, but in terms of equipment, I believe it's just labor.
Michael?
Thank you. Is there a timeline for deciding on what the new standard is going to be for San Bruno?
Our courtyard, well, Chevrolet was late in coming out with their, I believe it's a Caprice. Dodge has been on the market for a couple of years. Ford is also introducing a Taurus version of its Police Interceptor as well as the SUVs. We currently use our SUV for a supervisor car, but I'm not sure that an SUV for everyday officer use is, is wise, fuel economy-wise, wise size, and configuration for urban use. I'm hoping within the next year or two, I think by next year, looking at our fleet, we are going to have some replacement vehicles next year. So working with the courtyard, some of our officers, and with the industry, we'll hopefully evaluate and have a recommendation for a model for replacement next year.
So likely when that happens, we're going to see probably a good-sized increase in the cost per unit, as we have to buy new lights, radios, whatever compatible equipment is going to fit the new models, as well as replacement parts and getting mechanics geared up and everything.
You're correct. And this purchase before you tonight, we budgeted, we thought we were going to go to and replace a new model. So we were going to pick a new manufacturer and maybe select a Dodge or a Ford. By using the Crown Victoria, we budgeted $90,000 to do that for three cars, because there is an increase in cost. By finding these Ford Crown Victorias, it's a little over $75,000, so there was some savings there. But you are correct, there is going to be a cost increase next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So in your estimation, Crown Victoria is a pretty tried and true vehicle for our police department?
Tried and true vehicle. Again, I'm not aware of any safety concerns. They did have some safety concerns on some of the models and years back, but it didn't affect our fleet, and that has since been corrected.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Here you go.
Couple of things. It was also brought up just as a question about any additional insurance costs. I would assume training would be no, because obviously they're the same type of vehicles. But I don't want to speak for you. And on the insurance, would that be the same as well, because it's the same type of make and model?
The city is self-insured, same make and model. In terms of training, just our, every two years, our officers do get updates in drivers' training, but no specific training to the Crown Victoria. But we did recently complete training in driving.
Thank you. I, since this item is pulled, I had a question on the public works vehicles. I don't want the police department to feel singled out.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, we have, what is it? The Ford XLF 450 truck in the amount of $66,803. And then, of course, there's the second item. I was just trying to get a little clarification as to its need, its use. It's just $66,000 for a vehicle, what its purpose is going to be, how much usage it's going to be seen on a weekly basis in the department, and what it's replacing, and if I could just get a little more clarification.
I will let Dennis Bosch to give you a very brief update on how the truck will be used, will be basically used by the sewer division.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. This truck is what we've named as the lateral response service truck. In years past, we had a large vehicle that had the task responsibility of cleaning the sewer mains, checking problematic areas, or sewer hotspots as we refer to them, and also responding to house calls from residents that had problems with city-maintained or jurisdictional responsibility of lower laterals that the city maintains for them. Due to some regulatory compliance rules and having to maintenance and expeditiously respond to house calls and all the other things that we need to do to maintain the sewer collection system, what we did is, is we took the task responsibility of this large truck and all of the gas use to have the truck run around town and check things and complete maintenance and clean sewer lines. We let the big truck stay and just clean the lines, and, as the council's aware of, we've also had to increase the amount of sewer lines that we have to stop sanitary sewer overflows. What we then is, then what we then did is took a very old truck and somewhat retrofitted it for the short term to have this truck just drive around and respond to sewer calls at residences and do these spot checks, so that we took it away from the responsibility of the bigger truck. This led us clean more sewer mains with the bigger truck, and then this truck that we are replacing, or that we are asking for, will replace this older truck, so that we can then respond, do further maintenance, provide a higher level of service when we respond to these sewer calls at residences, which actually do take a little bit longer to, takes longer time to, to assess the problem, put our machinery in the lower laterals to remove any roots, or complete CCTV inspection of the laterals. So this truck is basically, or what we've proposed, is to replace the existing older truck, so that we can go around and do all this other maintenance.
The second equipment, the roller, is mainly used by street, is, is used by the other two divisions, also sewer and water, but mainly by street. It's a seasonal type of use. The existing roller was purchased in '91. It's long past its useful life, cannot be, longer be repaired, and that has a very high need and use during the summer months when asphalt work needs to be done.
Any more discussion on item F under the consent calendar? Any action?
To the chair.
Ken?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Item F is passed. Michael, you asked to pull item G. Adopt a resolution approving the request to waive the rental fees for Lions Field for a memorial softball tournament.
Yes, and I believe a member of the public wanted to have the details of that tournament and, and the motion related to it just announced, so the public is aware of what's happening and the city's involvement.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we were approached by a couple of residents to the city, asked to waive the fees for memorial softball tournament. Two residents were killed in an auto accident recently, and the residents that came to us are trying to raise funds to support the family. The tournament is scheduled for the December 8th, 7th, 8th, 9th weekend. It would be at Lions Field. Lions Field, as you know, has just recently received a synthetic grass surface to it. There is nothing yet scheduled out there, as this is the first year, it's after the soccer season, the AYSO season is over. It's before the Little League groups are forming and starting their early play. We recently had a rain, which is slightly off-topic, but a good opportunity to bring it up. We've just recently had a couple of small rains that would have typically closed that field for a week, and the field is open for play and under use, so the synthetic grass and the drainage systems are all working properly. The city council sets the fees through the master fee schedule for field rentals, and the group asked to waive the fees, which in this case would be approximately $300, depending on the exact amount of hours that they would be using the field. That way that the extra money can go to the family to assist them. The item went to the Park and Rec Commission and was unanimously recommended to the city council for approval.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, just make a couple of other quick comments. The incident, as the city council, I believe, is aware that precipitated this request was particularly horrific and tragic automobile accident that occurred in our city. And the individuals who lost their lives were instrumental and very active in youth baseball in our community. And it's from that, for that reason, and with that in mind, that this particular item is being brought forward for what is a relatively, actually very small requested fee waiver for the use of the field at a time when it would not otherwise actually be in use. So while it is not our practice to approach the city council on a regular basis with feverly requests, both the commission and staff felt that this, this particular unusually, unusual situation warranted your consideration.
Okay. That's definitely a very worthy cause, so thank you for bringing that.
Any more discussion or action?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the consent calendar has been adopted and approved. We do have our presenter here from Sam Trans, but I'm going to ask her to hold off, because I do have a number of residents here that are very interested in our next item. It is 10E that was moved from the conduct of business, and it is adopt a resolution supporting Assemblymember Jerry Hill and San Bruno residents' call for removal of Chairman Michael Peavy from the California Public Utilities Commission. This is a very, very important resolution. I'm going to read the whole thing to all of you. But before that, I'd like to say that I was in attendance at numerous press conferences, both in San Bruno and in San Francisco at the CPUC. And this is a state issue. It's not just San Bruno-specific. We've been saying that for two years now. And it's growing, not just Mr. Peavy, but the CPUC. And I want to read this to you. Resolution number 2012, and we'll find a number once it's approved. Resolution supporting Assemblymember Hill and San Bruno residents' call for removal of President Michael Peavy from the California Public Utilities Commission. Whereas on the evening of September 9, 2010, a faulty weld on a natural gas pipeline operated by Pacific Gas and Electric Company catastrophically failed, causing the pipeline to explode and ignite a fire that ripped through the Crestmore II neighborhood in San Bruno, killing eight residents, injuring dozens more, destroying 30 of homes, and leaving an entire neighborhood devastated. And whereas beginning that evening, the City of San Bruno committed to its residents that it would do everything possible, not only to restore the neighborhood, but to bring about the necessary changes to assure that a similar incident would not happen again anywhere, ever. And whereas last year, the City of San Bruno participated as a party to the National Transportation Safety Board's, NTSB, thorough year-long investigation of the incident, which produced several key findings, among them that the ineffective enforcement posture of the California Public Utilities Commission permitted PG&E's organizational failures to continue over many years. And whereas the City of San Bruno is a party to the negotiations toward a fair and reasonable settlement of the proceedings before the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC, and has consistently participated in good faith, providing advocacy and representation for the interest of the citizens of San Bruno. And whereas the recent action of the CPUC under the leadership of Commission President Michael Peavy to suspend the administrative hearings that provide the public an opportunity to hear and understand the issues under investigation related to the tragic September 9, 2010 incident, call into serious question the commission's and its president's commitment to an open, honest, and transparent process in this matter of acute public concern. And whereas the further action of President Peavy to attempt to unilaterally force mediation in the ongoing negotiations and to engage in a backroom deal to select a mediator without consultation with the parties is a violation not only of the public trust, but of any reasonable procedural or ethical standard. And whereas while the tragic events of September 9, 2010 directly and irreparably damaged the San Bruno community, investigations both by the NTSB and the CPUC itself have demonstrated that numerous factors which led to the pipeline explosion may in fact not be unique to the utility system in San Bruno, and therefore that the important issues under consideration through the CPUC proceedings are critical to the safety of citizens throughout the state of California. And whereas the citizens of San Bruno and the state of California have the right to expect and to demand that the public agency responsible for oversight and regulation of the utilities in our state is doing everything necessary to assure that the utility systems operating in our neighborhoods are built, operated, and maintained with public safety as a first priority. And whereas in his actions and his leadership of the CPUC, President Peavy has not demonstrated that he has an adequate respect or accountability for interests of the citizens of our state who look to the CPUC to assure their safety and to provide independent regulation of utility companies in California. And whereas residents of the City of San Bruno, victims of the explosion and fire, along with Assemblymember Jerry Hill, have voiced their strong concern about President Peavy and have called upon Governor Brown to remove him, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of San Bruno that the city council joins its residents and Assemblymember Hill in calling for the immediate removal of California Public Utilities Commission President Michael Peavy, who has failed in his fundamental duty to protect the interests of the citizens of the City of San Bruno and of the state of California. That's our resolution. And I see there's a number of residents and family members of victims in the, in the audience. Would you like to say something before we take action on this resolution?
I agree with what you just said.
Thank you. I just heard from Renee Morales, who lost her daughter that evening, and she wholeheartedly agrees with this. City council?
I'd just like to say that for two years now, we've, we've done what we've, what we've said we've done is to try to take care of the residents and the victims of this, of this tragedy. And it is, it is frustrating, and I cannot imagine how frustrating it is for you. So we will plug on. We will fight harder, and we will do what it takes. This is unacceptable, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of this, this resolution and hope that it sends a clear and strong message to the governor.
Should also be noted that Dave Pine, our supervisor from this district here, was at the press conference yesterday in San Bruno, and is going to bring a very similar resolution to the entire county board of supervisors. We've also been in touch with the League of California Cities, and we hope that every city in California that belongs to the league, or even doesn't belong to the league, gets on board with this, because this could have happened anywhere. And we see the failure of the, of the utility and the failure of the Oversight Board that's supposed to manage this utility. It's, it's a disgrace. And to be cut out of a process unilaterally is, is a slap in the face to the people of San Bruno and the state of California. And if there's not a lot of other discussion, I would like to...
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you for reading that. I was at the Monday press conference, and to make it brief and to the point, Renee Morales, Susan Bolis, who were there, lost loved ones, said, "They no longer can stand quiet. It's not just about their pain and suffering, or the neighborhood around them, but it's for the safety and those in the state of California." And so it is, they very eloquently, very bravely, put that, those comments forward, and I appreciate their continued efforts and standing. We stand by you, and we thank you for standing up to assist the rest of the folks here in California to make sure that this tragedy doesn't happen again.
Thank you. I would like to introduce this resolution for adoption.
Mayor Buwain.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
And now, I believe, we'll hear from Sam Trans.
Thank you, council, for taking time to hear our presentation tonight. First, let me apologize for being late. I'm the new communications manager for Sam Trans and not being familiar with the area. I found myself having a hard time finding the location, but I appreciate so much giving me another opportunity to present to you our draft Sam Trans service proposal. One of the things that I want to emphasize is that this is, this is a preliminary draft that you're seeing. We're here to seek your comment. We are incorporating a great deal of public feedback through a series of community and writer forums before we finalize the presentation, incorporating all of this feedback, and take it before our Board of Directors in January of 2013. So there's a lot of time here to hear from you, the public, your residents, and our writers regarding what we're proposing to do with these changes. The following presentation is a snapshot of the SSP draft plan. It highlights some of the findings that were, that were a part of our 18-month study process, and the recommendations we're making as a result of them. First thing that I would like to do is point you to, are we, is there, is the presentation... Is the presentation being projected anywhere? So the first thing I'd like to do is to give you the framework for what the presentation is about. It's really to do three things. Give our writers more of what's working, less of what doesn't, and try some new things. The study looked at, thank you, all of the service options that we currently have available, recognizing that right now, we're doing some things very well, and we're doing some things very poorly, and we need to make some adjustments in order to better serve today's customer. Primarily, we're trying to streamline our service, improve our frequency, because we believe that the better frequency we can provide people, the more often they will be willing to ride us, and provide some alternative services to the traditional fixed route, big bus services that we have in place now with an effort of increasing ridership. In looking at our services, one of the key components in this evaluation was our budget, and our financial health is a consideration. We have a number of issues that need to be addressed, including a structural deficit that stems from debt obligations, including the BART payments on the BART extension, construction, and debt obligations to the ongoing Caltrain operations. So when we looked at this service plan, we were trying to do more with what we have while still living within our means. We recognize that cutting service is a self-fulfilling prophecy, that when you cut service, you lose riders, and you create a cycle of downward ridership. So what we're trying to do is improve our services to grow our ridership. Implementing this program will create a wellness plan for tomorrow's riders. It gives us flexibility to adapt as things change and offers us a path for continuing to increase ridership, or continuing to increase service as we increase ridership by reinvesting in our system. In particular, the issue that we're presented with is how do we... The foundation that we start with. We have not reevaluated our service in more than 10 years, and in that 10 years, population has changed dramatically, employment patterns have changed, and travel patterns have changed. And this plan is really intended to address those changes. One of the things that we looked at in particular was our weekday ridership. And what you see here are our four different service offerings. Community buses, which tend to operate in isolated communities. They don't tend to connect to a lot of services outside of those communities. Express buses. Local buses, which operate in communities but connect with things like BART, Caltrain, and other services. And finally, our El Camino Real core service. As you can see on the far left-hand side of this slide are our most heavily used services. Those four services make up about 50% of our ridership. They all operate on the El Camino Real. As we've gone through this study process, we've gone through three series now of public outreach to our riders and to the community. And the thing that we've heard consistently is you need to improve your core service, you need to increase the frequency, and you need to make it easier to use. And that's reflected in the ridership there. People want to use that service. They want to make it... They want us to make it better so it's more accessible for them, because it is a key transit option for commute throughout our county. But we don't want to stop there. We want to improve connections, east-west connections to our service as well. We believe that that's critical, and particularly in areas where there's high population and employment growth. The next metric that we looked at in evaluating our service was the route performance. And as you can see from this slide, 65% of our routes fall below that black line, which is the average for financial effectiveness and productivity. That means that the combination of the cost to operate the service and the amount of ridership and fair revenue that we're getting from the service are substandard. We need to raise the bar, and that's what this plan intends to address. So the service proposals cover four key areas. Service improvements, particularly along the El Camino Real, and enhancing service in high-demand areas, as I mentioned before. Modifying services, and that means improving some east-west services by streamlining them, increasing the frequency on those services, and of course, making some routing changes to those services and schedule changes. Discontinuing services. There are five routes in the proposal that are proposed for elimination. And finally, offering to implement new services. We're proposing two new routes and two alternative routing services, and I'll get to those in a minute. So the route service proposal for North County is covered on this slide, and I don't want to go into each and every one of these routes, but in particular, if I could call out the 140 and the 141, because I know those serve many San Bruno residents, and those are areas of concern, we are proposing to make some improvements and realignments on those routes to increase ridership and improve the frequency and shorten the end-to-end running time. That does mean that on the 140, there will be some changes, and I know of particular concern was service to the Bay Hill Shopping Center. The 141 will continue to serve the Bay Hill Shopping Center area, while the 140 will now route around it so that it has a shorter running time to get to Tanfran. However, I want to emphasize that the school trippers on those routes will not be touched. We will continue to operate the school trippers. So these are routing improvements for non-school riders. In addition to those changes, you can see here, there are some other proposals for the North County area. The others that would be of particular importance for your community, of course, would be the El Camino Real changes that are being proposed. Right now, we operate two routes on the El Camino Real throughout the day, the 390 and the 391, as well as two other routes that operate during different parts of the day, the 292 and the KX. The 390 and the 391 are being proposed to be collapsed into one single route, as we have done on the weekends with our new weekend ECR service. Our goal with that is to actually increase the frequency of that route and improve access to it. We did this on the weekends as a pilot project, and we've already seen an increase in ridership because it's been easier for our riders to use since implementing it. We've seen a 1.2% increase over the last three weekends, or I'm sorry, four weekends that it's been in service. In addition to that, we are proposing to make changes to the 292 and KX. This is a cost-saving measure. One of the things that we found when we surveyed our ridership was that most of our trips take place intra-San Mateo County. That's where the highest service demand is. But we're spending a lot of money and resources carrying riders into San Francisco. So in order to reinvest those resources in our intra-San Mateo County trips, we're proposing to eliminate some of our San Francisco services. And this slide contains that information. We would be proposing to run the KX and the 292 to San Francisco only during peak commute periods, eliminating off-peak San Francisco service, and we would be eliminating all of the 391 service into San Francisco as part of this proposal. We're in the midst, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, of an extensive public outreach effort. We have gone to all of the city and town councils in San Mateo County, as well as the county board of supervisors. We have conducted a number of writer forums and public workshops. We're going out to the community colleges to seek their feedback, and we'll be holding two public hearings as well. Upcoming, we actually have two. I know there's only one listed here, but we just, the other day, scheduled a second opportunity for public feedback. The first coming up next is Thursday, October 25th, at our offices, and we will also be holding another writer forum in South San Francisco on Thursday, November 1st, at the Magnolia Senior Center between 6:30 and 8:00 p.m. And that information is available on our website if anyone would like to attend that as well. And with that, I'm open for any questions that you have.
Any questions?
To the Chair. Earlier in the year, when this was first proposed, there was a public forum proposed at one of the local schools, and there was a conflict, or there was a mix-up, and it didn't happen. So I was wondering, I'm only aware of one meeting in San Bruno, and that was at San Bruno's Church, correct?
On October 11th?
Right.
Yes.
So there is no other... There's no chance of possibly, you know, scheduling another to make up for that other one?
I'm not aware of the elementary school...
I'm just saying, is there a chance that you can get another public hearing or another neighborhood hearing in San Bruno?
It's something that I can ask the team. We have had more than a dozen different events throughout the county. They've been heavily publicized and actually well-attended, and we do have two more coming up. The one in South San Francisco is... Would be accessible for San Bruno residents, but I'll be happy to ask the public team...
I'm going to be a little terse here. You stated that you've gone to all the city councils and everything. We're dealing with community here, you know, and as far as I'm concerned, it's got to go to the residents, and it's got to go to the schools. I mean, did you go, you know, did you do an outreach at Skyline College? You know, did you go to any of the schools that have been affected by, you know, by the... We've got a middle school that we've heard from parents that are very concerned about, you know, their kids, even though you've made it clear that they may not be affected. But the word is not getting out, and they're sort of panicking. So I'm just saying.
We have offered outreach presentations to all of the schools and school boards of superintendents in the county. Not all of them have responded to us, but we would certainly be happy to do outreach to any of the schools who needed an additional presentation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
I guess, real quick, going on to the Vice Mayor. I mean, how will the San Bruno residents' questions, comments, where can they direct them so that that proposal can be coupled together when it goes to the SAM Trans Board? Because obviously, as you just heard the Vice Mayor, and there are others that are hearing about it, want to be able to convey, communicate, have not attended, cannot attend those meetings, and what recourse or outlet do they have in order to get those conveyed through so it goes all the way to the proposal to the board?
Sure. So first of all, there are two meetings coming up. If they can't attend those meetings or would like to provide comments in another format, they're welcome. The presentation, as well as all of the documents related to this study process and research, are available online at this web address, www.samtans.com/ssp. They can review all of the materials I presented here tonight and more, and they can make any comments either in writing to the email address provided here, ssp@samtans.com, by calling this number, or by contacting SAM Trans Customer Service, which is 1-800-660-4287, in addition to attending one of the outreach meetings.
Thank you. Any questions?
And just quickly, when will you be making your decisions?
We will take the... So what we're doing now is collecting comments through the end of this year. We'll be taking all of those comments into consideration, processing them, providing them to our Board of Directors in January of 2013. They will make their final decision in February of 2013. So we have plenty of time for public comment.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Stand up to the microphone, please. And give us your name and your street.
My name is Regina Diaz, and I'm...
Right into the mic.
My name is Regina Diaz, and I live on Fleetwood. And I had a question about the 140 and 141. You said the school route, or the school trippers, will not be changed, but I saw that under the 141, but not the 140. Is it... Are they both going to have school trippers, or just the 141? And the 140 is being canceled?
Can I get to the microphone now? Thank you for your question. Neither of the routes are being canceled. The school trippers that are currently in place on either of the routes will continue to be operated. The only change that will impact the school, and I'm sharing with her, I've got a copy of the route that's proposed, and I'll leave this with your city clerk. We just developed this today in response to some questions we got from your city clerk. The change that may affect some middle school students is on the 141, there are some middle school students near the area of Skyline College, and they're using the 141 now. They may have to make a transfer, but we estimate that to be a very small percentage of the students. They're currently riding a regular bus, not a school tripper bus. All of the school tripper buses that are currently in place will continue to be operated. Does that answer your question? If you need further, I'd be happy to walk through this with you one-on-one. Yeah, I'll give you my card.
And then I just wanted to say, one more thing. I really don't think the residents of San Bruno are aware of these changes. I was on the 140 today, and I was asking the people on the bus if they are aware of the proposed changes, and not even the bus driver knew what I was talking about. Certainly, none of the people who got on the bus knew what I was talking about. So I think it would be helpful to have maybe just a little flyer on the bus, you know, proposed changes and the route that's being proposed. I mean, that kind of information would directly reach the, you know, the intended people who would benefit most from the information.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry that your bus did not have flyers on it, and I will make sure that we find out what's happening with outreach on that line.
All right. Thank you.
Speaking of feedback, is there a... On the SAM Trans website, is there a before and after current map changes of each city's location, so the route changes? Because I heavily take sometimes 390, 391, and, you know, I'd like to see, you know, a current change where there's a map that shows, you know, visual image provides it... It's a lot easier to know, hey, maybe I shouldn't take this route, or this is the alternate route that I'll take. And through your website, is there alternate feedback mechanisms? Because what you've provided is there's a lot of council meetings, and like one of the council members said, you know, you have to reach out to the community, because a lot of folks, as you can tell by the attendance, are not going to the city councils. They're not going to get the message, the core audience. And so I had highly advised that you seek out, you know, schools, talk to the principals. You know, a lot of the schools, if you engage a conversation with the principal, oftentimes they'll be able to choose a location, and they'll be able to, you know, instruct each class in like ninth grade, 10th grade, you know, so forth, whatever appropriate it is. And so also having alternate feedback mechanisms within your website, where there's a feedback forum, or at least getting something started where people can participate and you can know, hey, we're changing 390, so if you're located near this school, here's what you'll need to do. So current and then proposed changes, something to that extent.
Thank you. All right. Once again, thank you for your presentation. Item number eight, public hearings. Adopt a resolution approving the 2012-2017 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program and appropriating funding for the 2012-13 capital improvement project budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're asking your consideration tonight to first hold a public hearing to allow members of the community, if there are any, to comment on the proposed capital improvement program and budget, as well as your consideration to approve that document and the plan that it sets forth. The City Council conducted a study session meeting last week, during which we reviewed with you in substantially more detail some of the critical aspects of that plan and budget. It's not our intent to repeat that presentation tonight, but simply to summarize some of the high points, both from a program... From a programmatic perspective, or from the work plan perspective, as well as from a financial perspective. The budget itself and the capital improvement program are available to any interested resident through the city clerk's office, in the San Bruno library, and on the city's website. The program itself, we, every year, take a five-year planning horizon into consideration in developing the work program for necessary improvements, repairs, rehabilitation, replacement... in developing the work program for necessary improvements, repairs, rehabilitation, replacement to the city's critical infrastructure. The city, as you know, has a broad and diverse array of capital assets that are critical to the city's ability to support delivery of the wide range of services that our residents respect, expect and that they rely on. When we think of infrastructure, we're, we're often conditioned to think of streets and possibly those utility facilities or infrastructure, both above ground and below ground, our water and sewer main lines, our pump stations, our wells, et cetera. But we may on occasion forget that our infrastructure, if you will, consists also of our public buildings, such as the one that we're in tonight or the one that we work out of on El Camino Real. It also includes our parks, ballfields, our sports facilities, our cable television infrastructure, as well as the streetlights and other necessary facilities that, as I indicated, support the services that the city provides. This capital improvement program takes a long-term, five-year planning horizon into consideration in evaluating, as I indicated, the necessary investment in maintaining that infrastructure. And it takes a one-year look at what will be the specific work program and the costs of delivering that work program. The purpose of the five-year capital improvement program are, as I indicated, to maintain and to optimize the useful life of that infrastructure, to protect the city's investment in its capital assets, to prioritize the necessary investments or, or projects that need to be delivered, and importantly, to identify both the funding requirements as well as the funding sources that are available to support the projects that need to be done. And as Kim will discuss with you in a moment, there is also a variety of resources that are used to fund the capital improvement program. However, as we indicated to the city council at the study session last week, those revenue sources are far from unlimited and they are even far from sufficient to actually deliver the work program in the necessary timeframe. So it, it is a continual juggling act, if you will, of prioritizing those projects that are most critical to the delivery of, of city services. Overall, the city in evaluating the program that we're bringing for you tonight, bringing forward to you tonight, looks at the city's overall capacity, both operational as well as delivery, as well as financial, to deliver the projects that are necessary. The program looks at optimizing the schedule and the timing for the necessary improvements, looking at when do we need them and, and how do we deliver them within the timeframe that they're needed. And it takes into consideration long-term planning. Again, we look at the five-year planning horizon because it's a practical, realistic glimpse at the, at the necessary projects and the, and the available funding sources. But in reality, it is both prudent and necessary to take an even longer term view of, of infrastructure in order to develop that five-year plan. In our rate study that the city council considered a number of months ago related to our water and wastewater utilities, we took a 10-year planning horizon into consideration. And in the master plan documents that we've been preparing and, and will be presenting for the city council's individual consideration in the next several months, for our water system, our wastewater system and for our stormwater system, we're looking at as long as a 20-year planning horizon for maintenance and rehabilitation of the necessary infrastructure. In this five-year capital improvement program and in the one-year budget that is in front of you tonight, one of the key issues, I mentioned funding as, as a critical component of the city's ability to deliver the program that is necessary to support it and protect its capital assets, is the loss of redevelopment. Now while we may and the, and the public may understand redevelopment and its utility to be primarily about new capital investment in the community and economic development, and that is in fact exactly what redevelopment set out to provide when it was first initiated in our state a number of years ago. In fact, this city and many cities have relied on redevelopment agency tax increment funding to be able to further necessary rehabilitation and capacity-enhancing infrastructure projects, which are the fundamental basis for any development and economic development in particular within a community. So as you heard from us last week at the study session, one of our key considerations this year and going forward is the loss of redevelopment and not only how does that affect our ability to deliver our, our vision that's been articulated through the transit corridors planning process that has recently concluded and which has produced a, an exciting vision and plan that the city council will be considering very shortly. The loss of redevelopment funding has also created a, a bit more urgency and concern about how to maintain and, and plan for necessary infrastructure capacity now and into the We have used a variety of planning documents, as I indicated, with a variety of planning horizons, but particularly taking the long-term view to assure that the program that is articulated in our capital improvements program and, and the work program is actually consistent with the variety of other plans, policies, studies and so forth that the city has undertaken related to its priorities having to do with both our utility as well as our other infrastructure. The slide in front of you has sampling of those documents and the policies that are articulated in each of those documents have, have been consulted in the development of the five-year and the one-year program. I'm going to ask our finance director, Kim Duran, to give you a, a little bit of, just a taste of some of the information that is detailed more specifically in the capital improvement program and then walk you through some of the financial considerations that, or for the, the actual financial information that frames the big picture of this budget.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, the 2012-17 CIP program includes a total of 41 projects across the seven categories as shown on the slide behind me. Projects appearing in the five-year program encompass the repair and rehabilitation of the city's water and sewer mains, rehabilitation of pump stations, tanks and wells, purchase of cable television equipment, repairs and improvements to city facilities, street and sidewalk rehabilitation and continuing investment in technology. Of the 41 projects in the five-year program, only five projects appear in the program for the first time. The rest of the projects either are carryforward from previous CIP budgets or have been presented to council separately prior to this budget. The five projects that are appearing for the first time include the disaster recovery project, which will ensure that the city's network and business operations continue in the event of a catastrophic event, a fire suppression project to install a clean agent fire suppression system at the city hall data center, as well as at the cable head end and data center, the Madison Slope stabilization, which will fund the design and construction of the stabilization of the hillside of Madison Slope, Microsoft Office upgrade, which will replace the city's existing outdated Microsoft Office 2000 with the most current Microsoft Office suite available, and finally, the Skyline Boulevard widening, which is a project pending the approval of San Mateo County Transportation Authority to fund staff oversight for the widening of Skyline Boulevard between Sneat Lane and Interstate 280. Since the adoption of the last CIP budget, a total of 25 projects have been completed and four have been defunded, allowing for higher priority projects to move forward. Also, as discussed at the CIP study session, the CIP, the proposed CIP budget includes a recommendation to move a total of 14 projects from the, from the previously approved CIP budgets to the operating budget. These projects include various studies, master plan updates, grant programs and maintenance items that are more appropriately defined as operating costs. If approved, the 2012-13 operating budget will be amended at a future date to include the incorporation of these projects. The five-year capital program includes a total cost, projected cost of $111 million, of which $20 million is for the Crestmore Recovery Project. Of the remaining $91 million, nearly three-quarters of that amount, or just over $70 million, is for water and wastewater projects. You might recall, this is the 10-year program that was discussed during the water and wastewater rate study. The 10-year program for water was $84 million and wastewater was $75 million, so these numbers are consistent with what was discussed previously. Water and wastewater projects in the current year work program include the reconstruction of Pump Station 4, replacement of the water mains at Spyglass and Marion Drives and the replacement of Commodore Park Well, the construction of a replacement sewer main on San Mateo Avenue and Keynes Avenue, and continuing investments in the jointly-owned treatment, wastewater treatment plant with South San Francisco. As the city manager previously indicated, the city's utilities have master plans that provide a foundation for the five-year work program. However, no similar document exists for the city's facilities, park and technology improvements. In both the parks and facilities section and technology sections of the budget, no projects outside of the current year work program are included. Staff will continue to focus efforts on improving the manner in which the city plans for future projects in these areas. The CIP budget is a five-year planning document that includes a budget appropriation for the current year only. The resolution that is before you this evening requests total budget appropriations of just over $33 million, 11.4 million of that being carryover appropriations from either previously approved CIP budgets or prior city council actions. The remaining 22.3 million, well, it's across seven categories, actually comes from a total of 31 different funding sources, if you look at the summary that's included in the budget. So really what that demonstrates is staff's continuing effort to pursue grant opportunities to help fund city projects that are a priority and also identify other special revenue funding sources so that we're not utilizing general fund, funding sources when we don't have to. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. Staff is here tonight and can answer any specific questions about projects that you might have.
Any questions of staff at this time? All right, this is a public, this is a public hearing and like to open the public hearing now. Anyone in the public like to address the council on this item? If I close the public hearing, you'll be precluded from talking to us about this item again. All right.
Move to close the public hearing?
Motion second to close the public hearing. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion or action?
To the chair. There are three items that are within the CIP budget that were brought up at the study session, one that I'm gonna add that I hadn't brought up at that time. And these were, and they are, the Vector Truck, the Video Inspection Truck and the Olympic Pump Station. Those three items, I would like to see, as I indicated before, but on all three of those items, more of a cost analysis, whether they're really the best avenue in which to go with the pump project, as well as the two vehicles that I just mentioned. So just for the record, I want to see those come back. It would be my expectation that those, for me personally, I'm speaking for myself, that I need to be, have more detail and more understanding and appreciation for the need for those three items.
You just want further detail and explanation? Or do you want to handle them separately and remove them?
I guess we could handle them separately and remove them, or I guess, city manager, we could either separately remove them or approve it with the understanding that when those come back forward, that they are brought up and, and give it more time and deliberation.
Yes, I think staff, first of all, these three items were identified in the discussion at the study session and staff is committed to understanding both what the council's direction on this is, as well as in the near term, bringing back the Olympic Pump Station analysis and consideration for the type of project that staff will be recommending move forward prior to taking any action to solicit design or construction contracts. So we're, I don't think, unless it's the council's interest to change the budget as it's presented, I don't, but we, I would commit that staff has heard and understood the council's interest to bring that, that back in the near term. The other two items, if I remember correctly, are proposed for consideration of funding in future years, not in the current fiscal year 1213. And so once again, we understand the council's direction and we'll be bringing those back for further analysis and consideration by the city council prior to any action to solicit actual purchase of those vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion? Action? Irene?
I, we also discussed at the study session, is that too loud?
No, it's fine.
Okay. We also discussed looking into the Bay, Bay Shore Circle, BART, SPUR and working with them to see if we can do something with it. And I, I realize we can't just throw that in there, but I'd like, I'd like staff to come back at some point in the near future discussing what we can do with that.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Connell, yes. Similarly, staff is preparing to bring back a report on our research and analysis on that piece of property and the relationship, the ownership and alternative suggestions about the future use of that parcel that we believe will be responsive to the city council's interest. I know that the discussion at the study session considered whether a project be developed now and entered into the capital budget. You could certainly direct us to do that tonight. Or my recommendation would be that we bring, we'd be tasked with bringing back a, a complete report and analysis timeframe at the beginning of the calendar year in the January, February timeframe. And then at that time, you could consider, one, whether you're interested in, in our analysis and recommendations, and then secondly, whether you would like to amend the capital and budget to include something specific.
If I, well, I'm, I'm a little confused. I'm, I mean, we're, it says here that staff is going to develop a plan and present it in, in January. What is the plan based on? Is, I mean, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Irene, but you questioned what the availability of the property is, what is our, you know, what are our limitations and what, what possibly could the city do if it were given that property by BART? Correct?
However it works out, either BART gives it to us, we do a cooperative thing, I have no idea. And that, I'm assuming that's what staff's gonna find out.
Yeah, and so that, I mean, that's, that's all that was given direction. I don't know what possibly a project would be, other than a cleanup, you know, but I mean, I'm just not really clear as to what staff is going to be providing us in January.
To the chair. This is something that, and I appreciate council member O'Connell bringing it up again. I brought it up at the study session, I brought it up last November, I brought it up before, and other people from the community brought it up. And it was a matter of, we understand that the area that BART owns deteriorated. So city staff has maintained that. BART was paying for our time. My understanding is unless that's changed, BART does not. Unless, I'm incorrect.
That is correct. We are not receiving reimbursement.
So they're now, we're doing it because if we don't do it, no one's gonna do it. So we're, we're footing the bill, taxpayers are, for something that's not ours. So then the question was, we- So then, the question was, we need to, those streets are so darn narrow for emergency vehicles, for people who park their cars, who are three-fourths of the car on the sidewalk because they're so afraid of it getting sideswiped. This was my intention, is bringing it forward way back when, was for us to try to move on that and see if we can't acquire it, even to improve the parking and the neighborhood in that, at least. So that's kind of where my direction, just to give you some thought.
So to answer Vice Mayor Ibera's question, I think the use of the word "plan" or "project" might be a little bit ambitious. It was our intent to return to the City Council with detailed information about the ownership, the configuration, the maintenance, the operation of that property, and hearing the council members' interests in parking, I believe Councilmember O'Connell had expressed some interest in the potential of improvement of the property. We would be also prepared to give you some ideas. This is, as Councilmember Medina has indicated, is not a brand-new issue. There's been some previous work done by the city a number of years ago related to potential alternative uses of the property, should it be available to the city to do something more than cut the weeds on it. So it was our intent to develop background information, give you some thoughts, and allow you to have a more detailed and thoughtful discussion about how you would like to proceed.
Okay, understood. I'm afraid the public hearing's closed. Thank you. Any more discussion with the council or action? Someone have to introduce the resolution.
If there's no other discussion, I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Now, very quickly, I'm going to go back to the very beginning and thank the garden club, which I forgot to do. So thank you for your floral arrangement they always provide. So now we go back to number nine. Public comment on items not on the agenda is the council's policy refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda is pursuant to state law. Mr. Reekel.
Robert Reekel, Seventh Avenue, Honorable Mayor, City Manager Jackson, council members and viewing public. I'm here to give you a quick update on two subjects, PG&E's Line 101 and the November Farmers Market Second Harvest Food Bank food drive. As you know, PG&E discovered a short section of Line 101 running just east of the Seventh Avenue property line near the Angus Gate that had become exposed. PG&E, working with various governmental oversight agencies, has informed the city that pending no rain for at least forty-eight continuous hours, repair work should begin this week. The work should take one to two days. I and my neighbors want to thank the city and Congresswoman Spear and Assemblyman Hill for pushing to move the completion date up from their initial proposed seven months to closer to two months. And secondly, our Pacific Coast Farmers Market Run Sunday Farmers Market Site Manager Ashley is currently finalizing with the Second Harvest Food Bank of San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties to hold a food drive for our three Sundays in November, November 4th, 11th, and 18th. And I hope to be able to give you more information as that comes forward, and that would kind of be a nice way to close the season of the farmers market this year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else under public comment? Item number 10, conduct of business. Item A, receive oral report regarding the state pension reform legislation to take effect January 2013.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and Councilmember O'Connell on Skype, I'm pleased to present you with a short presentation on the pension reform bill, which runs about thirty-nine single-spaced pages. We've tried to condense it down into just a few slides. So as you can see from the first slide, this was recently adopted. It's going to be in effect, or start being in effect, at the beginning of the year, and it covers pretty much all state pension plans, not all of them, but most of them, and we'll talk about the ones that it doesn't cover. So we just want to take a quick look at how San Bruno pays for employee pensions now. The employees pay a fixed percentage, which is either eight or nine percent, depending upon what category they're in, and that percentage is fixed by state law. The city of San Bruno pays for the remaining cost of the pension, and that cost has several components to it, which I won't get into the details of, but essentially, it's about eighteen and a half percent of the employees pay for miscellaneous employees, and a little over thirty-six and a half percent of the employee pay for safety. So the takeaway from that is that, in essence, cities across the state, including San Bruno, essentially assume the risk that changing demographics, variations in investment returns and so on, won't exactly match PERS's actuarial model that they've used to set the rates for any particular year. So that's why the city sees fluctuating rates over time and why employees pay a fixed percentage. So let's just take a quick look at how PERS itself has done over the years, and the answer is not too bad, considering there are a lot of other pension funds that are in worse shape than PERS. They're about seventy-five percent funded for both miscellaneous and safety. And PERS's position is that the unfunded liability is really an accounting issue, not a solvency issue. The reason for that is they don't have to pay the entire amount out in one year, or even five or ten or twenty years. It's essentially a very, very long-term system, and so it's okay for them to be in the neighborhood of about seventy-five percent funded. They don't have to be a hundred percent funded. The other piece of good news from PERS is that their average rate of return over the last thirty years has exceeded what they've assumed by about two percent, and so that's pretty good. However, as you'll see in the next slide, that average, that actual rate of return really fluctuates significantly, and that's what causes their investment return to look like this. So we're hoping that nobody here in the audience or at home has an IRA or an investment fund whose performance looks like this. That would be a very volatile fund to have, but PERS can have it because they have such a long investment horizon. This is not the kind of performance volatility that you would even expect or want for your own pension fund. The effect of this volatility is it does affect employer contribution rates on a yearly basis, and we'll see why that is in just a minute. So let's talk about the actual law and what it doesn't do. First of all, it doesn't affect public entities that have their own non-state pension system. There are a few of those. There are charter cities where the electorate can set pension benefits, and those are the ones you tend to read about in the newspaper, San Francisco, San Diego, San Jose, I think they've got something on the ballot there. And the new law does not affect the vested rights of current members of either PERS or other what's called reciprocal pension systems. And all a reciprocal system is, is one that says, if you're in our system, then you can transfer over into PERS or some other system that has that reciprocity. So the bottom line is no changes to current retiree benefits, no changes to benefit formulas or optional benefits for current members, absent some sort of collective bargaining, and the employee contribution rates, the eight and nine percent that we saw on the slide before, are not required to be changed until 2018, and even that with a few caveats, and we'll look at that in just a second. All right, so let's take a look and see how the law affects current San Bruno employees. So the first thing is, the law requires that, as an employee, you've got to contribute at least half of the normal cost of your pension by 2018. But what the law does is set a cap of eight percent for miscellaneous, twelve percent for safety. Well, if you remember from the previous slide, miscellaneous already paying eight percent. So under the new law, they wouldn't have to pay anymore, even though eight percent isn't necessarily half of the normal cost of the pension now, or may not be in the future. As far as safety is concerned, right now, they're at nine percent, they could go to twelve, but that has to be collectively bargained. So there's a little bit of ambiguity in the law about whether the city can impose that in 2018, or whether there's some other process that will have to be used, and the, most of the opinion at the moment is that it will have to be bargained for. So that's how it's going to affect current employees. It's also going to affect current employees because they won't be able to purchase service credit after the first of the year. So if you're a city employee, in this city or anywhere else in the state, if you want to buy that extra service credit, now's the time to do it. There's no retroactive pension enhancements. If you get convicted of a felony, you don't get part of your pension, and you can't come back to work as an employee except under limited circumstances. So that's how the law affects current San Bruno employees. Let's take a look for a second and see how the law is going to affect new members, that is, new members in PERS, people who have never been in PERS before or in any other reciprocal system. What's going to happen after the first of the year? And the answer is that for those new people coming into the system, there's a new retirement formula for miscellaneous employees, as you see, two percent at sixty-two, maximum benefit of two and a half at sixty-seven. So right now, the city has a more favorable formula than that. The new safety formula is going to be 2.7 at fifty-seven. And employees aren't going to be able to use their highest year of performance in terms of pay, they'll have to average over three years. In addition to that, they can't use overtime or other kinds of payouts to enhance their pension, and their income that's pensionable is going to be capped at $132,000. So that's a significant difference for new members that come in. And there's really just a couple of other changes. There's no supplemental plans. Oftentimes, cities would adopt other defined benefit plans in order to supplement PERS, and you're not going to be able to do that anymore for new members who come in after the first of the year. And then, last but not least, our contributions to a deferred comp plan, like a 457 plan, is no longer going to be a vested right. It's not frankly clear that it was a vested right to begin with, but the law makes it clear that employers can, are free to change that if they wish. All right, so let's take a look and see how the new law is going to affect the city's pension costs, if at all. Well, first of all, the new law only applies to these new members, people who have never been in PERS or any other reciprocal system. But we're told by the Human Resources Department that about eighty percent of the city's new hires in the past five years were actually new members. And so what that tells us is, if that trend continues over the longer term, we are going to see a decrease in those pension costs because most of the new hires are new members that are going to be subject to the new and less expensive rules. However, the short-term costs are likely to increase. Now, why is that? Well, PERS says that it's going to increase for the employer about half a percent to five percent. That's a pretty big swing. In fact, that's an order of magnitude. They think it's going to be on the low end, but if it's only one percent, as you can see, it's a little over $200,000 to the city. So we do expect that the costs are going to go up. And if you go back to that big chart with all the volatility, the reason why the rates go up is because the peaks don't show up in the rates until a few years afterward, and the lows are smoothed out over several years. So they don't catch up with each other, and that's why you see the rates going up. So finally, what's next? We've yet to see whether there's going to be an effect on retention or recruitment. We don't know the answer to that yet. And I think it's safe to say that it's not over yet. I think that you'll see some additional legislation for some more reforms, especially to have the employees take on some of that risk, some of that volatility in some way. And I think we'll also continue to see the potential for voter initiatives at a local level where that's permitted in charter cities and in other cities that aren't subject to PERS. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I think you mark pretty concise and actually understandable.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 10B, receive a report and authorize extension of terms for members of citizen, advisory commissions, boards, and committees. Carol?
Honorable Mayor and Council, twenty-four members of our commissions, boards, and committees have their terms expiring on October 31st, and I'm here tonight to ask if you can extend their terms until the end of November so we can have an opportunity to advertise the openings that we have. In my staff report, I said I had two openings on citizens crime and one on bike and ped, but I also have one on traffic and safety. So it will be going in the focus, it will be in the Daily Journal, it'll be on Channel One, and we hope to get additional applicants so that we can interview at the end of November.
The action you want is a motion to extend it?
That would be nice.
All right. Anyone?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Irene, did you say aye?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Carol, got it? Item C, adopt a resolution adding recognition plaque costs to the master fee schedule and amending the memorial and recognition policy. Randy?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor and councilmembers, the presentation tonight will include an information brief.
Please make it.
My fault.
Thank you.
Thank you. My presentation tonight will include a brief history of the memorial recognition policy, the types of service to be recognized, as well as the types of recognition, the associated fees and costs, potential naming recognition, and then a recommended process. At the end of the presentation, I will have a summary of discussion points for council, as well as recommended items, recommended actions to be taken. On October 10th, staff reviewed this information with the Parks and Recreation Commission's Committee of Commissioners Davis, Lara, and Pierce. The full commission received this information during their meeting on October 17th, and the feedback from both of these meetings is included in the presentation tonight. In January of 2009, the City Council adopted the memorial recognition policy for honoring individuals or groups who have served the community. The City Council then commissioned a recognition sculpture that was dedicated in San Bruno City Park this past June. To begin the recognition program, staff is recommending the city make some revisions to the policy to clarify the types of recognition and the processes to be used at the various levels. Staff is also recommending an amendment to the master fee schedule to include the fees for the plaque, the recognition plaques. Policy recognizes two types of contributions to the community, monetary donations and volunteerism. And each of those have two subcategories. The first type of monetary donation of great benefit to the community is the extremely generous one-time donation. In some instances, an individual or organization may wish to contribute monetarily towards a new or renovated city facility. Staff and the commission recommend that these be considered by the City Council on a case-by-case basis, as the size of the project and the contributions will differ considerably from project to project. Personal tributes are the second type of monetary donation, and those were included in the original policy, but were not clearly defined. Many residents wish to donate a tree, bench, or other item to the city in recognition or in memory of a loved one, and the proposed policy continues to allow for such a gift on a space-available basis, but the plaque will be placed on the sculpture in City Park rather than on the bench or adjacent to the tree. Staff is recommending that the personal tribute inscriptions be restricted to ensure language is appropriate for public viewing. Inscriptions would only include the name of the person to be recognized, the date, and the standard text as listed in the policy. Examples are shown in the staff report, and those are "in honor of John Smith," and then the date "in memory of Jane Smith," and the date. Another example would be "a tree was planted in honor of," or "a bench was donated in memory of." And again, those would be as spaces available for the benches or for the trees, depending on the wishes of the donors. There are two levels of service recognition categories, and those are defined as special service and extraordinary service. Special service is identified as someone who has given at least fifteen years of dedicated service to the community that has had a positive impact on our residents. That individual must be viewed as an appropriate role model who developed new programs or facilities, or provided the leadership to enhance existing programs or facilities. Extraordinary service is defined by at least twenty-five years of dedicated service, again, that had the positive impact on our residents, and again, must, the individual must be viewed as an appropriate role model who developed new programs or facilities, or provided the leadership to enhance existing programs or facilities. For extraordinary service, the difference, the other difference, besides the fifteen years versus twenty-five years, the individual must have been actively involved in multiple community programs and influenced the lives of many San Bruno residents. In terms of recognition on the sculpture, as shown here in the slide, staff staff is recommending the following. Personal tributes be limited to a 3x3-inch plaque to accommodate a large number of requests that may come in over the years. Special service recognition plaques would be 4 inches by 6 inches. And the extraordinary service plaques would be 5 inches by 7 inches. In terms of the plaque installation, staff and the commission recommend that initially, one pillar be used for the personal tributes, one be used for special service, and the one that has already received the installation of the September 9, 2010 plaque, that be used for the extraordinary service recognition. Based upon the examples we've laid out here on the sculpture, there is space for 60 to 70 of the personal tributes to be installed on each side of the three pillars. Or as it shows here, 180 to 210 plaques on one of the pillars for the personal tributes. As you can see on the upper-hand, right-hand side slide, it gives a viewing of the level that we have put 3x3-inch, in this case, post-it notes. There are 42 of them, 42 shown here. And there is still room above and below to add more, still in the easy viewing area, without going too high or too low for someone to read the plaques. The special service plaques that are on here, we are looking at having 21 of them, as shown here on one side of the plaque, for the three-pillared. That would be 63 to 90. Again, we could go a few above and a few below. The, in terms of the, I'm sorry. And again, we believe that this allows for enough space for all of the plaques to be included for several years. If there was ever a need for additional plaques to be done and the sculptures are all filled, then we would suggest we come back and look at other options. The first one might be that the seated wall could be used as a place for plaque installations initially as it was just installed and has a flat front that could accommodate some of the plaques. The handouts you have show the actual sizes of the plaques that are recommended. Here is examples of the plaques with Times New Roman 24 point as an example. Typically, your staff report as an example uses 12-point font. This is 24-point font. But the samples that the council members here have shows the actual size, 3x3, 4x6, 5x7, with the language. Staff is also recommending that the language of the special service and the extraordinary service plaques only contain language that includes the honoree's name, their years of service, the name or names of the organizations where the honoree has made contributions to the city, and the dedicated date. And the examples are shown here and again in your handouts. The recommended prices for the various sized plaques are shown in the staff report. The fees include the plaque costs, staff time for the application review process, the installation, and the basic maintenance of the plaques for the next several years. Staff recommendations include the personal tribute plaques to be 3x3 and cost $400. Special service recognition plaques, the 4x6s, would cost $500. And the extraordinary service plaques, the 5x7s, would cost $600. Staff also recommends that all of these costs be borne by the nominating organizations unless otherwise specified by the City Council. The Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously approved recommendation to the City Council for the cost of the special and extraordinary service plaques, the 5 and the $600 plaques. A couple of the members thought that the $400 plaque might cost a little bit too much. And the concept there was that the 5 and $600 plaques, the cost is coming from service organizations, those organizations that have received 20, 25 years of service, $500, $600 did not seem to be an extraordinary amount. However, a family who's paying for the 3x3s, $400, may be a little bit steep. However, the commission majority voted to keep the $400 fee for the 3x3s as well, with the rationale being that the cost covers the plaque, the installation, the future maintenance. But it also keeps the recognition more special and to a more select number, rather than everybody just going out and buying, here's a square on the sculpture. An additional type of recognition that is described in the policy is the naming of a facility component. And this is considered the highest form of recognition and would only be bestowed on a few of those that receive the extraordinary service to the community. The policy states that every effort shall be made to provide names for parks or facilities that identify a geographical location so as to promote an understandable and recognizable reference for people in the community. Staff is recommending that the policy be continued and that naming recognition for individuals or organizations be given to components of the facility. We have examples already similar to that in place within the city, such as Lara Field within City Park. City Park being the facility, Lara Field being the component. Greenberg Field in Commodore Park is another example. Similar examples of components being named for organizations would be Rotary Pavilion in City Park or Lyons Field in Bel Air Park. The policy also states that if naming a facility component is being considered, the individual or organization should have a clear connection to the facility component being named. And that individuals considered for this recognition must have been deceased for one year. When reviewing this, the commission agreed that persons either living or deceased should be eligible for recognition with the personal tribute plaques for special or extraordinary service. The commissioners had differing opinions on whether persons living or deceased, whether living persons should be eligible for a facility component to be named in their honor. Some of the commissioners stated opinions that that honor should only go to those who have been deceased for a year so as to remove the emotional portion of the decision regarding someone who has recently passed away and also to better understand the full character and community impact. The majority of the commissioners thought that a living person could be eligible to receive the recognition in the form of naming a facility component, with the caveat being that the honor is removable by City Council if it is later discovered that the person is not considered as an appropriate role model or as someone whose name in some way discredits the community. Staff recommends that the removal provision also be applied to the special and the extraordinary service levels. If the City Council should choose to name a facility component after an individual organization, staff also recommends the cost of the signage be borne by the nominating organization unless otherwise specified by the City Council. And I know this is long and I'm going to be going close to the end of this one. In terms of a memorial recognition process, the staff and the commission recommend the following. No screening of the personal tribute plaques is considered necessary as long as the standard language restriction is approved. The special service awards require nomination from at least one San Bruno, established San Bruno organization. Extraordinary service awards require nomination from at least two different recognized San Bruno organizations. For either special or extraordinary service recommendation, recognition, it is recommended that a committee comprised of six members, two from each of the city's commissions, Culture and Arts, Parks and Recreation, and Planning, meet annually to review any applications that may have been submitted. The committee will then work with staff to gather input from committees, boards, commissions, and other recognized organizations. Five affirmative votes from the committee would be required for recommendation to the City Council. A majority vote of the City Council would then be the final approval for the recognition. So that's the end of the formal presentation. We are now asking for discussion on the following points. The type of service and recognition. Are the fees discussed appropriate? The size of the plaques appropriate? Should the policy be continued that only facility components be eligible for naming? Can community service recognition be bestowed upon a living person? And should the recognition of facility components naming be reserved for those who have been deceased for one year? Or should that be eligible for a living person? And finally, we would seek council action in terms of adopting the policy with the potential revisions that come up tonight as well as changes to the master fee schedule to include the plaque costs. Thank you.
I think the Pension Reform Act one was a little easier to understand.
Yes.
Just teasing.
No, no.
I know it's complicated.
As the commission said, there's lots of components and they're all subjective in this case.
Mr. Mayor, I did request that Randy include some of my former slides in his presentation. He respectfully declined.
Okay, discussion by the council.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask some basic questions on the plaques? First of all, thank you for the examples. I guess my question is, why put a city logo on it?
The city logo really shows that it's coming from the city. The nominating group made the recommendation. But it was the City Council, it was the commissioners and the City Council that moved forward. The personal tribute does not have that seal. That is one where an individual can just pay for and have the plaque put up on the sculpture to either recognize an achievement of a loved one or a family member or in memory of someone. But the other two go through a screening process and City Commissioners and Council make the final decision if that person is appropriately placed on the sculpture.
Very good, that's a very good answer. Thank you. My next question is, why do we have to say that there was a tree planted or there was a bench? Why not just recognition, I mean, in memory of or in recognition of? I mean, it just seems like there's, it's turning into a directory or something. And will the plaque go up on this monument notifying that in recognition of someone that we named at another facility? I mean, what is the coordination here?
The two different questions. One, it does not have to say a tree was planted or a bench was donated. That was just a concept that came up if somebody did both, if they paid for a tree as well as for a plaque. It would be a way to recognize it. Previous policy has been on, if somebody donated a bench, then a plaque was placed on the bench itself. The idea would be we wouldn't continue to do that. So I hope that answers that question. All, the ideas then would be that all of the recognition be placed on this sculpture, all into one location in the city. We haven't really discussed it, but the assumption was made that plaques that are already on benches that are out there would be left out there. But anything, any new recognition would all come to the City Park sculpture.
And I guess my last one would, no repeats. So if there is, if there's a, if there's been a recognition, you know, in the park or in another, in another park or some other part of the community, you know, they may want to also do it here. So I don't know if that's been discussed.
It was not discussed, but we can definitely include that in the policy. And I do want to clarify, point to one question. I guess the only exception to my statement that all of the recognition would come here to the sculpture site, the only exception to that would be if a facility component was named after somebody or after an organization, then a plaque at that spot would be put up. So if this room was named in honor of somebody, there would be a sign here recognizing that. But that would be the only, that would be the only change to that. Thank you.
Okay. Michael, anything? Irene, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I have two requests. When the council people speak, could you all speak right into the mic? Otherwise, I really don't hear all of it. And second, Randy, could you put back the slide that shows the decision points?
This one here?
No, no, the last one.
Yes, thank you. So I have several comments. One, I think the division you have is great. It gives everyone an opportunity to put a plaque up if they have in memory of someone. It gives organizations an opportunity to honor other people. And they have extraordinary service over 25 years and all the other. It's a bigger plaque and it's more prestigious. So I think those are great. I have problems with the cost. I think the $400 is fine. It covers what it does. And that's a choice people make, if they want to do the memorial or not. The second one is fine too, the $500. If a group wants to recognize somebody for their special service, okay, that's wonderful. I have, I think the $600 one, I think we should, if there's somebody out there that has that much service who served the community in so many different capacities and for 25 years or more, I think the city should bear the cost of that. Think about it. How many people do you know who've done that? A handful maybe? I've been in the city for years and years and I can't even think of maybe seven people. So that would be my recommendation for that. I have a little problem with the five votes for the six, the six commissioners. I think it should be a majority. I don't see why it should be five out of six. It should be, I think it should be a majority, just the same way as a majority in the council. I like the clarification you did for if the person wants to donate a tree or a bench, as long as we have space for it, because that was initially one of the problems we had before. There was more people wanting to have memorial benches than we had space for. And that's, oh, and then however this all ends up, I'd like it to come back in a year so that we can have it reviewed and see if we need to tweak it in any way. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Michael? Rico?
Mr. Chair, I'll try to state a point like Irene did. The 3x3, I happened to watch the commission meeting. So I got to hear firsthand. I know they all did consensus. There was really no official votes. There was concerns from them about 3x3. I know they had three commissioners missing that evening. I know there was a concern about costs. It wasn't on the last one, I believe it was on the first one. They thought that that was high. A lot of the assumption is, is that a service group might then be having the cost. And the $600, if there's an individual that warrants that and has done that much service to the community, and it's $600, and I don't know if the, out of the, you know, the money that's collected for Culture and Arts, that, if that can be, I don't know how many, we're talking a year. But if it's one or two a year, I would wonder if the city should not bear that cost as well, if we're actually honoring somebody for giving 25 years of service or more to the community. I know that there, I do agree that it can be adopted tonight. And I think it should still be a work in progress. I think it still should go back to the Park and Rec Commission so they could still see... still see how it works, fine tune it. I know you talked about having five out of the six, uh, as far as the, the commission, commissioners. Of course, if there's six, you're going to have to at least get four, so it will be, have to be, for a majority, it would have to be four. I, I do think that this needs to be reaching, I even thought, should it be four out of the five votes of the council? We're talking a symbolic gesture of naming something, I don't know. Things can be tweaked along the way, I understand. This is kind of a Olivia document. Listening to the commission, and they talked about loved ones. Anybody can put a loved one on the three by three. And, and I believe I heard somebody say it during the meeting, they referenced an animal, which of course, animals and pets are loved ones and members of the family. Is this going to also include that? Or is it just for people? I mean, I think that needs to be clarified, because I heard it that night when I was, when I was listening. You know, as far as the, I think the initial policy they have, because I know the biggest thing, I think it was the, uh, being alive or deceased as far as having something named. And I saw that they wrestled with it, and I did too, and I can think of three situations in my life right now that dealt with. It was Tom Lara, when I was a city employee, and I was down there at that field and watched that when Quentin Cop was in office, so it tells you it goes back sometime, and watched that unfold and watched him celebrate, in the joy of having that named after him. I know that we had Bob Greenberg Field, and I do know that I was vice mayor then, and Bob was ill. And so, things were expedited, I would say, because of the situation. He was terminal, he was ill, and this was something that was already in the works. And I must admit, Mayor Franzillo was out of town, and we proceeded forward. We called a special meeting, we took a vote at City Hall. I was able to call him on the phone, Jim had told me, get him on the phone, got him on the phone and was able to tell him what had happened. That meant something, but I also know that a part of me feels bad still today, that he physically couldn't be there to see that. I take responsibility for that, because at that point, that's what my role was, trying to get him there. But would have been the best thing in his condition. I don't know. But sometimes you, you go on emotion. You go on the people that love people, or that have done so much for the community when they come out. I know in Dale Wilson's case, when he passed away up at Club Bay Hill, I remember going at the funeral and going to the family's home, and that moment, people were already talking about naming Diamond Two, Wilson Field. Now, some time went on, and they named the Fourth of July Tournament, the Wilson Tournament, Pee Wee Tournament, which was apropos. I think beautiful because of all the work he did. So, I do agree with waiting some time, because I think we all go on emotion, and the moment gets to us. And however, I also believe that the city council, if they chose to shorten the time, or if they thought it met the extraordinary situation, that it warranted it that quickly, or within two months, or what have you, that they would have that right and ability to go ahead and make that happen as well. So those are some of my comments.
All right, before we take action, I just have a couple of, of words I want to share with everyone. I know Randy used the word component of structures versus structures, and you used the word clear connection, and I just want to float something out to the council. We all had a dear friend, passed away a number of months ago, and that was Mayor Bob Marshall, former Mayor Bob Marshall, who was very instrumental in building this very senior center. And I just want to float something out there. I know it's different than what the, um, the resolution and the procedure says, but I would have no objection to, for instance, naming this senior center after him. But I just want to share that with you and leave it open to a future council action, if in fact the council deems something else more appropriate. But it would be my intention and my wish to name this entire senior center after him.
Through the chair.
Irene?
I'm sorry, I missed half of what you said.
Too bad.
All right, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
All right. I just said I wanted to float something by the council. I said, I know it's in, uh, it's different than what the resolution says, but that Randy mentioned the word component of buildings and not buildings or facilities, and also someone having a clear connection to a facility. And I told him I thought, from my personal view, we all lost a very good friend a number of months ago, and that was former Mayor Bob Marshall. And I would have no objection in the future, and this is my, my personal view, of naming this senior center, which in fact, he was very instrumental in building, after him. And I just float that out there now for future action, and possibly if the council deems something else appropriate, that's fine too, but I, I do want to make my wishes known.
Thank you.
I think it was appropriate.
Thank you.
And as I indicated, I think that councils should not be, there might be a stipulation of a, of a policy, a rule, but I also believe that it doesn't mean that when things, as I indicated, things can be done differently, can be changed. I would concur that, I think that that needs to be looked at. And I think Mayor Marshall, I remember him as a, as a city employee, as a volunteer, as a council member, and I think he, he offered great value and did a, a great job and cared for the community, when in office and out of office.
Thank you. So I will be looking at that in the near future after this resolution is adopted. Would anyone like to introduce the resolution for adoption? Randy?
If I can ask for just a couple of clarifications before. To answer Councilmember Medina's question, the policy does state persons, not animals. So that would be one clarification. I've heard from a couple of council members to lower the number from five commissioners to four commissioners. Just want to double check and see if that's consensus, to include four votes from the commission to move it forward to the council. It would still be a majority. Should we include that? I'm seeing a nod on that, so, okay.
I'm just questioning, what, I mean, what, what was the significance of five versus four?
The rationale was just for such an honor to make sure that it was a super majority. In this case, four out of six is still a two-thirds threshold that it would have to meet, so it still has significance. We can go either way on it. The reason that it was placed, the original 2009 document was, had four council members required to approve. We are suggesting three, in the sense that three council members can change the policy to make it three again anyway. And so if there's a majority of council members supporting it, it would just be an extra step. If they really wanted it, recognition done, they would just change the policy, then three vote on it. But in terms of four or five commissioners, I, we can go either way.
If, if I could, through the chair, I, this could be very sensitive. I mean, if, if you get, if you get, if you get someone that does an application, and, and the vote is four to two, are, I mean, are we going to get a staff report to say why there was four to two? I mean, are there going to be negative, is there going to be negative information? This, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it comes to us, and then, and then obviously, you know, we, we need to make a decision, and it, I would think that it would be obvious why someone would vote no, and maybe it's felt that the person didn't live up to, you know, to what the, you know, to what the, the award or the, the recognition was. I mean, this is, you know, this is all supposed to be positive, and we're throwing in a portion of negative, and, you know, voting and all that is, you know, is possibly going to do that. And I, I just don't know how we're going to handle that. I, I, I fear, I fear the time when some, when one does come before us, that may have some controversy. I float that one out there.
So I'm hearing a suggestion to leave it as five to one, and the thought of being five versus six, rather than a unanimous, was that any one commissioner probably shouldn't have veto power, which was why the threshold was placed as at least five commissioners when staff had the discussions. But I'd like more thoughts on four versus five.
I was just going to suggest that we leave it the way it is for now, and see if it does cause any problems. If, if there are some issues, then we revisit the policy then.
Sounds good.
I'm fine for keeping it at the five with, and I had thought that also, it should still go back to the commission for review and fine tuning and come back. I don't think this should just be final. I, I think that there's a lot of little things that can be tweaked along the way.
Okay. So, are we ready to introduce it then?
Yeah, with the understanding that we can bring it back if we need to.
Right.
And just Randy, was there other items that you wanted more clarification on?
Just the, the discussion of $600. What I've heard from Councilmember O'Connell is she'd like the city to, to pay for that. The way it currently states in the policy is that the $600 cost would be borne by the nominating organization unless otherwise specified by council, which means you could do that on an each-time basis, rather than a blanket policy, but if it was, I mean, for somebody giving 25 years of service and the $600, you know, either, I'm, I'm sure the commission would have thought either way on that one as well. Just like a clarification before, as we make the motion.
I think the way you worded it, it's a...
We can always waive the fee.
Yeah.
Irene, are you okay with that?
We can always waive it.
With, which part?
We can, we can always...
I like it out. I really, it's kind of, to me, it's, you, if you're trying to, if, it's the city honoring someone, it's not just a group. It's the whole city recognizing the fact that this, some person put in 25 years plus of service in more than one organization. If you read the, if you read the nomination forms, none of us would qualify. I mean, it's amazing. So, it's really, to, to me, it's really to honor an extraordinary person who's done extraordinary service, and I think we as a city should do that, and pay for it, and just not, not sit at a council meeting and say, well, yes, this person will pay the $600, no, that person we won't. Either we do, or we don't. I, I don't want to sit and hassle at it at a council meeting. That's my feeling.
I for one will agree with you.
I agree.
I agree. And that's just for extraordinary service.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael?
Thank you.
Um, sure, why not?
Okay, you got the change, Randy?
That's fine. Gee, that was enthusiastic. Thank you for the clarifications.
Okay. Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution for a vote. As amended.
That was Michael, right?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Last item in conduct of business, item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the contract with Brown Colwell for design of the water pump station number four, college, upgrade project in the amount of $188,404.
And Mayor and council, council members, this is a much more exciting subject than the pension presentation.
Is it a quicker subject?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to object to the Public Services Director's characterization of my pension presentation.
Were you supposed to have slides on this too, Mark?
This project is one of the capital improvement program which you approved tonight. The college pump station provides a critical function for the overall water system, delivering water flow to the Skyline College and the surrounding neighborhood. This pump station is at the end of its life. Reason why, back in 2006, the city entered in a design service agreement with Brown Colwell to develop the design for two pump stations which needed to be replaced, the Maple Pump Station and the College Pump Station. Right from the beginning, issues came up with the design for the College Pump Station due to the fact that was limited land availability for any expansion of this station. In meantime, the design for the Maple Pump Station progressed, and the Maple, the replacement of the Maple Pump Station was completed back in 2009. In 2010, staff came back with the recommendation to modify the design contract, the design service contract, with $180,000 to complete the design for the College Pump Station, in the same time recommending and basically changing the location of the pump station from the northwest corner, existing location, to the southwest corner at the same intersection. In 2011, as part of the water system master plan, a ma-, a calibrated model was developed for our water system to simulate operation of our system. As a result of those new information, recommendation was made to increase the capacity of this pump station. To accommodate for that design change, I am proposing to amend the design contract for this pump station with $188,000, which would, and with a total of $471,000 for the design of this pump station, versus the two, $422,000 design cost for the Maple Pump Station. It is our intent to design this building in a context-sensitive manner to make sure that this new proposed building will fit, will fit properly in the surrounding neighborhood. The design was already reviewed by the Design Review Committee. They made appropriate recommendation and input in the design itself. If you will support this recommendation tonight, we'll be, our intent to come back in the spring with a recommendation to award the construction contract and to replace this pump station. At this time, is the estimated total cost for the replacement of the pump, pump station is around $3.6 million, including with, including prior design, expected construction cost. This is on estimate at this time. I am, this is the end of my presentation.
Any questions?
I'd like it to be related to the pump station. I mean, I, I see where, I see the location of this building, and it has bothered me for years on end, you know, that intersection. I mean, it is probably one of the worst-looking intersections, or most least-improved intersections in this city. It is a prominent, you know, entrance to a community and, and the college area, the college area, Skyline College. I was hoping, I was wondering, you know, you've done a fine job on delineating this building and landscape improvements. Is there anything that can be done, you know, to continue that to the intersection? Because that is just a wide-open dirt area that, if, if we had the money, I'm sure there would be some sort of, you know, gateway or, you know, designation for, you know, you know, that neighborhood, but there isn't. And it's been like that since I lived up there, so...
As part of the design for the pump station itself, is under consideration to add a sidewalk as part of the development of the building itself, and also to extend, if it's possible, that sidewalk to the intersection. If you recall, that intersection on the southern leg of the intersection has a crosswalk, and would be our intent, even if we'll not be done at the time when the replacement of the pump station will happen, but certainly the process will be started with charterain, that typically that takes longer time, to ex-, to extend the sidewalk through that intersection, and to really improve as much as possible that leg of the intersection itself. It's not as much as you would desire, but certainly is some, some... It's not as much as you would desire, but certainly, is some, some improvement.
I, I think it's an appropriate time to, I mean, with this project, you know, obviously coming up in the near future, that, you know, even if it's a community project or something, that we can, you know, add to, you know, the improvement, you know, with, you know, with that pump station, you know? I'm, I'm just saying that it's, you know, if we're out there, and you've got, uh, I'm sure you're going to have some irrigation, uh, you know, around the building, that possibly we can look into, you know, extending that irrigation, you know, or, you know, do something that, you know, can start or initiate an improvement to, you know, to that intersection.
I will further consider and discuss with the city manager, and also with the Park and Recreation, to see what could be done, or should be done, to improve that...
Thank you.
Good. Anything else on this? Any action by council?
No other action, or any other discussion. I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item number 11, reports of commission boards and committees. We don't have any reports this evening. Item number 12, comments from council members.
To the chair?
Okay.
Um, as, as a, as, as an active member of, volunteer with the American Cancer Society, and currently the event chair for San Bruno Relay for Life, I just want to send out, uh, I didn't wear this pink tie for any, uh, it's not a coincidence, at least, uh, but I just want, I ju, we've got a couple more weeks left in Breast, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so do what you can to support your charity. Uh, the American Cancer Society, uh, is doing, doing their part, and I know there are various other charities, but I'm just saying, uh, take advantage of the awareness this month, and, uh, remember a loved one, and, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm wearing an orange tie for Go Giants, just to get it out there. And I would like to say, Veterans Day, November the 11th, uh, there will be a ceremony at the Golden Gate National Cemetery. I believe it's at about 11 o'clock, but, uh, I'm sure if you call the city clerks, you can get to the information. There's a flyer out there from, uh, the Avenue of the Flags Committee. So, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a very, very nice ceremony, very nice. So if you can attend, it would be great. Closed session, we already had a closed session before, and this meeting is adjourned to the next city council meeting, right here in November 13th, 2012.